You guys are good to go.
Hey, Janice, can you turn the fan on? It's kind of stuffy in here.
It is a little stuffy in here.
Maybe Tom should do it. Get some air going in here.
It was freezing in here yesterday when I was opening the bid, like super cold.
Can you have the vent going too?
Which bid? All right, so I'm gonna hit the gavel.
Okay.
Kevin, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara. Councilman Isili.
Here.
Councilman Powell.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start the work session today with a presentation on a proposal to change speed limits on certain roads in Tuckahoe and North Sea. And Tom Hotten, our Director of Municipal Works, is here with us. Welcome, Tom.
Morning. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Morning, Tom.
Excuse my appearance, but we're dealing with a fuel station emergency this morning, so I didn't know how dirty I was gonna get today.
Hopefully, it's under control.
Yeah, it's not nearly as bad as we thought it was.
Oh, good.
I'm not passing these out, so. So at the last, where we at, last town board meeting, or two town board meetings ago, we talked about noticing a public hearing for a reduction in the speed limit on Big Fresh Pond Road and a couple surrounding roads that stem off of Big Fresh Pond Road. We had a tremendous amount of the constituents, greater than 50% of the constituents in that neighborhood petitioned my office to take a look at the speed on that road.
Which are in this packet.
Yeah, we attached them to, they're attached to the study. So when I saw that level of petition and that level of signatures and neighborhood support behind this, I commissioned a study with Nelson and Pope to take a look at the existing speed limit on the road, the curves, the traffic, the site distances, all of that in the hope of potentially reducing the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. In 2022, New York State passed a law allowing the speed limits to be reduced to 25 miles per hour, but they must be studied by a professional in traffic safety that's also a professional engineer. So it's, I'm not a traffic safety professional, it's a separate certification. So you have to be PE and a PTOE is the certification. So Nelson and Pope has that capability, as do many other traffic engineering firms. So we commissioned them to do the study, and they took a look at Big Fresh Pond Road and the number of houses and residents and curves and the narrowness of the road itself. And they determined, based on their engineering analysis at Big Fresh Pond, that a 25 mile an hour speed limit would be warranted on this particular road and these neighborhood streets. They also recommended a number of other signage improvements to Big Fresh Pond Road to notice the sharp curves and essentially educate the road users on, this is not your everyday neighborhood road, right? You should express some caution, you should be aware of certain curves that are coming up, just because of how windy and how tight it is.
Is that something we can just do without any kind of, like, just curve ahead?
Yeah, caution signs, we can absolutely implement without a speed limit adjustment. But the big thing here was that the geometry and the conditions would support a reduction of 5 miles an hour in the speed limit from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. And the civic association in this area is hugely supportive of this. I think there's an HOA in this area as well, or a community group that meets, and they are also...
Community group.
Yeah, a community group. I wasn't sure which one. They're immensely supportive of this as well. They deal with a lot of cut through traffic between, sorry, Millstone Brook Road and Noyak, and North Sea Road. There's a number of bike events that go through here every year. There's just a lot of people cutting through here that don't necessarily live there as well, and it creates some semi hazardous conditions for the residents of these streets. So we did the study, the study supported 25, and we were looking to put this on, and there were some questions at the noticing that required us to table.
So I'll just say that I received emails from some residents asking about this, because they knew that you had commissioned the study, I think in '23.
Yeah, it's been some time, we weren't sure the right time to implement this.
So they had asked me about it, asking whether or not this has been done and what's next. So that's why we wanted to bring this forward, because the work has been done, and Tom, you know, brought to my attention that its study has various recommendations and has identified speeding to be a problem, as indicated on page 13 of 17, so.
What happened in 2023? So we got the report, and then it just wasn't taken up by the board?
I didn't put it forward. We had some preliminary discussions, and it was, should we go area wide, should we just go the street? And I just really wasn't sure the support and also staffing level.
But now you've got a lot of support.
Yeah, I think we had gotten a lot of different requests at that time, so we were thinking we needed to look at the bigger picture, but I don't think that ever happened, so, yeah.
This is the most serious request we've ever gotten for 25.
But it is gonna spur more requests.
Yeah.
Is there a minimum of petitions, like, is there a percentage that's required in order for us to take action?
No, up until this time, it has just been the judgment of my office to look at the seriousness of the requests and if the neighborhood supports it. New York State doesn't set a minimum, they don't set a maximum, there's no rules regarding what a town should study. We are able to set our own speed limits, since our population is greater than 50,000, we're a suburban town. There are, I prepared a lot of other research to talk about area wide 25s. There are 36 other municipalities in New York State that have adopted area wide since 2022. Typically, there's a study done, the study breaks the roadways into three classifications, three groups, if you will. They look at your local neighborhood streets is group one, it's everything that's 30 miles an hour, that's either striped or unstriped, it's where people live, those streets. Group two are collector and minor arterial streets, so bigger streets that are funneling neighborhoods to minor roads and stuff like, to arteries. And then you've got your principal arterial streets in group three, which is everything that's like a 35, a 40, a 45. All of those streets are listed in our town code because they have speed limits other than 30 miles an hour. So the report would look at the neighborhood streets, or the study would look at neighborhood streets, and it would look at the minor collectors. But everything that is like North Sea Road and Montauk Highway, they'd all be excluded. Those will never be 25, nor should they deserve to be 25.
Well, the town doesn't control that, those are different municipalities.
Yeah, correct, that as well, that as well. But like Noyak Road, we've set 30 on there, there's no way Noyak Road's gonna be 25. There's just too much traffic on that road, it probably wouldn't deem it, but, you know, a study might tell otherwise. But there are other major roads that we control that are too important, and honestly, the 85th percentile speeds are too high, for good reason, that it wouldn't result in 25. So an area wide would affect Big Fresh Pond, it would affect neighborhood streets in Watermill, like up in North Sea, where they're not posted, there's no striping. And it would probably result in a meaningful impact to these, to the safety of the residents on these streets.
Did you just say there's something that, in the law, that says if it's 50,000 or more residents, that the town can control the speed?
Yes, and that's us. We have always set our own speed limits once we hit that population mark. So anytime we change a speed limit, we are able to do it, and if we were under 50,000, we would have to petition the state for that change.
But isn't, wasn't it just a couple years ago that the state, didn't the state previously require permission if you needed, if you wanted to go below 30?
Yeah, correct. So 30 was our base until 2022, and then in 2022, they lowered the base to 25 miles an hour. So now they only require...
They lowered the base to 25?
Yeah, yeah. So the minimum is 25, as long as it's accompanied by an engineering study, by a traffic professional that recommends that speed limit. So right now, our area wide is 30, that's the fastest you can go on a road, without that road being part of the Chapter 312-97 speed limits within community planning areas. So such as County Road 105, East Murphy's Road, Lake Avenue, Palm Flock Avenue, Old Riverhead Road. All of these have speed limits that differ from the 30 mile an hour area wide limit. So if it's not 30, it's listed in this chapter, and if it's in this chapter, we're probably not looking to change it.
But what about in this recommendation on page 14 in the report? You know, it recommends going from 30 to 25, but it also says something about speed limit reductions to 20 miles an hour.
So those are advisory signs, and the 20 mile an hour advisory signs are always in yellow, it's black lettering on a yellow sign, those are...
Around a curve?
Yeah, that's curve, that's caution, you should probably slow down for this curve.
If you're in, like, a big truck or...
So those aren't legal, those aren't limit signs, those are advisory signs, police conduct and force advisory signs. They're more to warn the road user that, you know, there's a curve coming up, the speed limit's 25, but you should probably slow down to 20. It's just like you would see on a highway ramp, hey, sharp curve coming, maybe do 40 instead of 75, like you're doing on 95 or something like that.
Way to end up in the woods.
Yeah, exactly. They're to help people adapt to changing road conditions and temporary road conditions as well. That curve only lasts for a couple hundred feet, it's not the entire stretch of that section. So there are a couple studies that I found upstate, Stantec produced them, they're like 20 pages. They look at groups of roads, they don't look at every single road in town, we don't have to study every single neighborhood road that's a tenth of a mile long or three miles long. They look at light classification, we could apply that across it. But it's likely something that we should consider. There is cost associated with it, with the study, and there's a pretty decent amount of cost with the highway department in changing signs, right? That's not a freebie, so that could be something that we...
Are you saying that study can take into account, say, like Springville Road on Hampton, in Hampton Bays, that kind of winds around? That gives you the same parameters, and therefore, we could, we don't need another study for that?
We absolutely need another study.
Okay.
This study that Michael passed around is specific to this road and specific to these road conditions.
So each road that's requested requires a separate study?
No, what I was trying to say with the groups and the classifications of light roads...
That would be a separate study in itself.
That would be a broader study that could implement this across multiple neighborhood roads that are similar in characterization. This study wasn't constructed with the intention to do that.
Okay, so one, another study could take a bigger area?
Yeah, and it wouldn't look at all 450 miles of road, it would look at select roads, and it would look at, all right, this road's similar to that road, that road's similar to this road, if it applies to you, chances are it would apply there.
Based on, based on conditions and preliminary data?
Exactly.
And this is the thing, though, you know, I think some of us are thinking going into this, oh, well, you know, we'll just account for all the roads, and we won't have to ever come back to something like this again. But the reality is, is if we do this holistic study, some of the roads that maybe people want to see a reduced speed limit may not even qualify...
Yeah, that's correct.
For a reduced speed limit.
Yeah, that's correct.
So that's why I think, you know, that's something to think about, you know, in going forward.
And that's why we have, like, tiers of importance of roads. We have our major arteries, like I have our speed limit map from the master, the highway master plan here. You've got Route 27, right, major artery, we've got 39, we've got Hill Street, which is in the Village, of course. You've got Sandy Hollow, you've got Sibonic, you've got North McGee Street. These are roads that are critically important to getting neighborhoods onto these major arteries. These roads wouldn't change. I wouldn't include these roads in the study, because I feel like it would just be a waste of resources to take these very large, high volume roads to knock them down to 25, that would never happen. Now, that second tier would be the roads that are slightly less big than, like, Millstone or Deerfield. And take a look at those and see, you know, those we would probably look at on an individual basis within this study, and some may go 25, some may be 35, some may be 30. And then below them are all like the small neighborhood roads, like Wicketuck, where it's just a loop in Sag Harbor that serves houses. Like, that's not critical to entire areas getting out in evacuation zones and stuff like that. Looking at, like, cross streets, like, Fanning would probably get its own, like, mention in this study, just because of the number of vehicles that travel. But Fanning might end up being a neighborhood road that ends up at 25, because it's a side street to Palm Flock.
Right.
So they would, we have a big town, we have, like, 450 plus mile of roads excluding the state stuff. But you have neighborhoods like Oak Avenue up in Flanders, where it's probably a good case for 25.
I would just say that, and I'd be open to investigating the path forward to doing something townwide, but I also think that, given the fact that you've already gone through the motion with the community here...
Yeah.
Their support for this particular resolution, I think we should move forward with this resolution, similar to how we did the no parking in Watermill. Not, was that Watermill? It was Bridgehampton, I'm sorry.
Bridgehampton.
Bridgehampton, and we did that recently with the community support, communities backing sent letters, they, you know, signed petitions. I think, you know, this, we should kind of move forward in the same direction here, given this was an official study, we spent money on this.
Yeah.
And the recommendations are very clear on what we should do.
Yeah, I mean, we have recommendations that say, you know, this road warrants 25 miles an hour, it would probably be safer at 25 miles an hour, so.
I have a question on page seven. You know, it shows that two of the three roads, when they studied the speeds, the measured speeds, were below the current speed limit. That's what it looks like, anyway.
For Lakeside and Parish?
Yeah, it looks like they were, the average speed was between 23 and 27 miles per hour.
That's the 85th percentile, so it's a little higher than average, it's the majority of the road users, so that would be case for lowering it.
But the majority of the drivers are adhering to the speed limit?
They're going lower than the speed limit.
Yeah, lower than the speed.
Because they deem probably that there is measured, measured to actually go slower. Right, so us telling them that they can go faster is counter to what the road users are experiencing. Like, we could probably sign it at 55, but people wouldn't go 55 to them, they'd probably still go the speed, because speeds are affected by what you're seeing, and the number of cars on the road, and joggers and bicyclists.
Is there any information that shows that lowering the speed limit lowers the speed, or is it a matter of enforcement?
So New York State Safe Streets Coalition, obviously, Safe Streets Coalition is in support of a reduced speed limits across the state. So they have a couple examples in their review of the new code and their support of the new code. So they talk about reducing speed limits, reduce the speeds, even with no other measures. So they said, for example, in Boston, they dropped its speed limit from 30 to 20. 30 to 25 in 2017 reduced the number of drivers exceeding 35 by nearly 30%. So just lowering the speed limit itself is causing people to go slower.
Okay, who's that report by?
This is the New York State Safe Streets Coalition.
All right, I would like a copy just for my file, but I think that that's very relevant.
Yeah, we'll circulate it.
Because, you know, some people do say, well, you know, they're not abiding by the current speed limit, what makes you think lowering it is gonna help, you need more enforcement? But that contradicts that theory.
You will need more enforcement initially, but also...
Most people, most people are aware, like, I think one of the things, you know, when we introduced the speed monitors, for instance, there were some who said, well, you know, you do that, you know, even if they flash, no one's gonna do anything, they're just gonna... But actually, they've been found to actually kind of work a little, you know, for a lot of people. Yeah, I mean, I think, and every municipality seems to be seeing that, and they're introducing them in their communities on their streets, and, you know, I think when it's there, there's awareness, they change their driving behavior.
You have to also realize that Parish Road is a short road, so you don't have enough time to go from zero to 40, or zero to, I mean, Parish Road is like, I think, I'm just trying to figure out how long it is, but I know it's not a long road, can't tell on this.
They might mention in here...
Yeah, that's a short road.
Yeah, it's right here, that's Parish Road, so it's go here to there, so.
You're not gonna have time to get up that fast, anyway.
And then I also found some notes from the village of Briar Cliff Manor, which is upstate. It's a village, it's smaller than us, but in their, in their press release on them lowering to 25 miles an hour, they say that, while studies suggest that lowering speed limits may not drastically change overall driving speeds, drivers often travel at speeds they deem safe. Lower limits encourage cautious driving and provide a legal framework for enforcement efforts to address speeding. So if it's signed at 55, you're probably gonna do 55, you feel comfortable, you might exceed it if you feel more comfortable, but if it's signed at 30, chances are you're not...
Not going 50.
You're not gonna go that much over.
Unless you're on County Road 39.
Yes, and then you're gonna do 60.
So, so, you know, I do want to add to Maria, in addition to what you were talking about with respect to the speed data, it does also say on page 13, number three, there were recorded 19 crashes in the study area, and I think that's also relevant to this action that's being taken.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just want to fully get all the information.
I just want to make sure it's, that part of it was also mentioned.
Yeah, so I mean, the local roadways were also more prone to having pedestrian and bike traffic on them as well, so slower speeds, like, they do help, they do help, they decrease fatalities. The chances are, you're less likely to die if you get hit at 25 miles an hour than you get hit at 30 miles an hour, so that's something. But as far as Fresh Pond goes, you know, we did the study, we have huge community support behind it, and it is deemed warranted in this case, so.
A lot of people walk up and down that road.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful.
And bus stops.
Bus stops. I mean, I don't go to that road all the time, but I do once in a while, it's beautiful.
It's a really nice road, you get to see the lake on most of it, so, excuse me, Pond.
Down the lake.
It does seem warranted, and even if it creates a flurry of more requests, we can cluster those, right? We don't have to jump on each one.
I just want to guarantee, I mean, I'm okay with this, I just want to guarantee that we're gonna move forward with the rest of the town, because we're, the requests are starting to pile up.
And if, you know, if we have a huge outpouring of requests, that, I think that would be grounds for another work session to talk about, let's look at it area wide. Residents might not know.
So how long would a study of townwide, townwide be?
I'd say give it three to four months, to be conservative.
Maybe six.
Now, you said that requests are building up...
I know that in the Rempsburgs-Bianca area, we're getting them, I know in Watermill on the back roads, we're getting them, in Hampton Bays, certainly, we're getting them. So we're getting quite a few, and we even got one from Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, but we kind of put that one to bed, so.
So we should, whenever any of us get one, would we send it to Tom, and you can put it in a book?
Please, we'll compile it.
And we're having a traffic, internal traffic meeting with the chief and everybody, and, yeah, next week, and I think if you have any requests that have come to you, please send it to Tom, so we could discuss it in our meeting. And Marie, I think you will be, you're invited in that meeting as well.
Yeah, I think there will be people that are gonna say that, you know, it's gonna take twice as long for me to get to the supermarket, but their studies are showing that it doesn't take that much longer. I think...
Like the corner of Millstone, Millstone and Barkers Island, that's a bad corner.
I had some data in here somewhere that, you know, it's just, oh. A change from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour adds only 1.4 minutes to a six mile trip. Most people are making short trips. It's not that much longer, but there is a safety increase associated with it. Your stopping distance is much shorter, if something jumps out in the road, you can stop a lot quicker from 25 than you can 30. So I think it's something that we really should consider, and let's see what kind of community support we're able to get from this.
All right, so we'll put this on for, put the resolution back on, schedule a public hearing?
Yeah.
And then we'll compile the other requests and do a study. I want to know, what are we gonna do, what can we do to persuade the state to take some action on 24? That was very disturbing information that we got from the resident.
Yeah, so I'm in the process of putting a letter and some data together for that, to send off to the state, to get some answers on that. I mean, I mentioned that it was a lot of pedestrian error in that, I don't know if there's been too many summonses written for the drivers of those accidents, but that's what I want to find out for sure. And it could be an issue of, yes, reducing the speed limit, but I, just like 39...
Lights, crosswalks?
Lights and crosswalks, exactly, it's all the other little things, yeah.
Would you think, so you're asking, requesting information or requesting action, because maybe we...
Well, I need to get the data from PD first, because we handle Flanders Road, and then once we have the data, we can then document that and send a letter off and try to find out what they can do mitigation wise, yeah. I agree, the lighting, which the neighbors may not, I mean, Route 24, most of those businesses and homes are very close to the road, some within 10 or 12 feet. You know, and street lights up and down 24 might be a lot for the neighborhood, but I think it needs to be done, especially in that corridor from basically the Big Duck to 105. Then when you do have the crosswalks, they should, like, do it how they did it in Bridgehampton with the lights?
With the rapid flashing beacons?
Yeah, that's how it should be done. I think all our crosswalks should have the, at least, the light on the side of the road to remind people of what's going on there.
Especially on main roads.
Yeah.
A lot of activity in that 711, and where the former restaurant used to be on the north side of it.
Yeah, that Hampton Deli at night is very, very busy on 24.
If you want, and then I can reach out to the HOPOP office, DOT.
Stir the pot a little bit, and then we'll follow up on it, yeah.
You know, they're my clients, I'm an AG, so I know a lot of those folks very well, but it's...
Okay.
And do you ever reach out to any one in the state or the DOT for...
They usually don't get back to any of the state, the county's much different, they're very responsive to the state.
Yeah, well, we can also enlist the help of our assemblyman, and he can help push it, too.
I can get on the phone.
Yeah, let's make sure we do that.
Yes. All right, so I'll put a notice back on for the meeting in two weeks, and then we'll have a public hearing in two weeks after that.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
Good plan, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Could you make a copy of that report for me and just leave it?
It's a PDF, I'll just distribute, distribute it to the group.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Safe Streets Coalition.
All right, that was good. Our next topic is the extinguishment of a town owned development right regarding a carriage house at 439 Hay Ground Road in Bridgehampton. And come on up, Kelly Doyle, Assistant Town Attorney, Dave Wilcox, Town Director of Planning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you, hi.
I was expecting a little staff report that was prepared.
Have to get stamped, Tom, Dave?
No, because I don't have the stamp, but she took it away from me.
Take your pen out.
Copy.
Yeah, the rights copy on the top.
Yes. Okay, so this is kind of a parallel application or resolution for the town board in connection with a property that has applied for landmarking at 439 Hay Ground Road in Watermill. I believe you had a work session a few months or a month ago on the landmarking of that house, and opened a public hearing and kept that hearing open pending a resolution on the development right. So we prepared a resolution for the development right, I believe there's a, not a hearing on that, right?
There is a hearing.
There is a hearing, okay.
The hearing on the landmarking and the development right will be together on November 12.
Oh, okay.
So this, yeah, this is just a work session to bring you up to speed on this development right that the town is providing as an incentive for the property owner to landmark their house. The staff report outlines the... their house. Um, the staff report, uh, outlines these sections of the code that authorize you to do this. Um, the chief, uh, building inspector and the planning and development administrator have indicated that this is in, uh, compliance with the code and the intent of the code to, uh, encourage preservation of historic structures. Um, and, uh, everything is falling in line. Uh, this is the first time that the town has utilized this section in the code for the purposes of, of historic preservation. Uh, you commonly, uh, give development rights away for affordable housing as an incentive, uh, to get people to provide affordable housing. The code also gives you the authority to extinguish town-owned development rights to preserve historic structures. In this case, the, the, the development right is being used for a carriage house. So, um, when, when a, a, anybody can apply for a carriage house. Uh, there are requirements on how big the property can be, um, and how big the carriage house can be relative to the size of the primary dwelling. When a carriage house is proposed in connection with an historic preservation designation, um, well, let me, let me go back. If it didn't have a historic preservation, uh, component, and someone wants a carriage house, they have to go and buy a development right. They have to get a development right to allow that second dwelling. When one of the buildings is going to be landmarked, the town, uh, waives that requirement for them to purchase a development right, and will provide the development right, uh, from the town's, uh, development right bank. Um, in this case, the app, the property did not comply with the, uh, minimum lot areas to have a carriage house, although the zoning board has granted the, the unnecessary relief.
Is this a property?
I'm sorry?
Acre system property?
I think it's one acre.
Yeah, just about little over one acre.
Yeah.
So, so it's all wooded?
No, not really. About half of it is wooded, perhaps. Um.
So, wait a minute, so I just wanna understand. So you said, you need a development right for the second dwelling, unless the primary dwelling is deemed, is landmarked, and in which case?
Well, either the primary or the carriage house. Usually, it's the, the carriage house that will be landmarked, because they tend to be smaller old historic buildings. Uh, but it could be either or. In this case, it's the existing primary dwelling that will become the carriage house, which will allow them to build a second.
So he has a home that he's preserving on the front of the property, and he wants to build a carriage house per se on the back?
Well, the front, the front will be designated as the carriage house, yeah.
Carriage house, okay. And is that, uh, is the new dwelling bigger than the, uh, present one?
Yes.
By how much?
Um, in their packet, there's a, the site plan that was approved by the ZBA.
It looks a lot bigger.
It's a lot bigger, yes.
Okay, and, uh, they connected?
No.
Okay.
But, but the, the sizes comply.
Okay.
But they didn't comply if, unless they got the variance, you're saying?
The only aspect that they didn't comply with was the size of the property.
So the property was too, was too, was it, the property was too small, or they couldn't make the setbacks?
The property would've needed to be sixty thousand square feet under our code to get a carriage house without a variance, so they're just at, uh, just over one acre. Just over forty thousand, so.
Forty-seven thousand.
Forty-seven thousand.
They, they complied with the zoning, um, they just don't comply with the, uh, one and a half times requirement for a carriage house. But the zoning board has granted that variance, so.
I remember this one. I remember having some, the board having some concerns about it, because, um, you know, we're just allowing so much more development than we'd have ordinarily just because this is gonna be landmarked, right? That's basically what's happening, yeah.
And that, and that's the position that the town codes and the, and the comprehensive plan have taken, is that in order to get, provide incentives for people to preserve these old buildings, uh, the town is willing to provide, uh, this relief and to provide the development rights.
Because a lot of the incentive is that if you, you know, with the facadesment, we do that, you know, and landmark like we just did at the board meeting to properties, I mean.
And you have discretion on those, on those facadesments. You know, if you felt that somebody had, had already gotten significant incentives through the, uh, the ability to have a carriage house, you know, if this application were to apply for a facade easement, you might say no on this one.
If what?
So I thought we were gonna see less of this home, new home from the road, I thought originally, and i- is the characteristics of the new home similar to what they're, they have?
From what I've seen, i- it's, it's a modern home. It's not a glass building next to a landmarked carriage house, is it?
Modern home. Should be, should be something with gable, something what matches.
Well, that will be an issue for the, for the ARB and also for the Landmarks Board.
Yeah.
Um, the, the application for the landmarking is not for the entire property, it's just for the historic house. Uh, if it were for the entire property, then the Landmarks Board would have, uh, the authority to review and approve the architectural design of the new house.
That's, that's what it should be, because why would you wanna build a contemporary modern house next to something that's landmarked?
Well, I mean, there are other ways to address that. They could buffer it with, uh, landscaping.
Yeah, it's only a, it's not even, it's not even, it's a, again, a piece, you know, I just, I Google it here and look at here, it's mostly look all wooded, and you put here, and how much buffer you gonna have? They're gonna, they're gonna want some grass.
Yeah. Um, the, the applicants have indicated that they would appear before the Landmarks Board for an informal discussion about the design of the new house, uh, and just to, uh, take under consideration their recommendations. But because the entire property is not proposed for landmarking, uh, any comments from the Landmarks Board would be advisory, uh, to the applicant.
And the ARB would, I'm sure, love to see those comments as well and take those into consideration.
If, if they weren't landmarking the, the property in the front, the, the home in the front, they could do what they're proposing without any public hearing if they were getting their own development right, rather than getting it from the town?
Well, they would need a variance also.
Yeah, with the variance.
I think the fact that they were a- a- applying to landmark the old house may have weighed on the zoning board's decision.
Mm-hmm. It is subject to landmarking.
Yeah.
The ZBA decision.
Right, the ZBA decision to allow the carriage house is conditioned upon the old house being landmarked. If they weren't landmarking it, uh, they would probably just tear down the, the old house and build a new house.
So, so then what is, what is, I mean, maybe it's, it's a, it's a process question, and this has to go before the board because of the density incentive, but the ZBA essentially says here in its, in its report that the, the ZBA grants relief from town code section three thirty dash ninety-four A to allow for what we're discussing here. Um, so what is needed from the town board?
The authorization to give them a development right.
That specifically is?
Extinguish the town-owned development right. That's in the code, it requires a public hearing and town board approval.
After the ZBA approves it?
Uh, it could go either way, but I imagine they wanted to make sure that the ZBA would grant the relief first.
Okay.
And it's, the ZBA is conditional. If they don't get landmarking, if they don't get the town board development right, then they don't have the rights for a carriage house.
But your point's well taken, that if, if we, if this doesn't happen, they can demolish, I'm sorry, if it doesn't happen, they can demolish the existing structure, and then they would have the ability to just build a new home.
They could build the house that they're proposing to build.
How old is that, um?
Without even a variance, probably, right? Because then.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Um, what year was it? Seventeen ninety or something like that?
Yep, seventeen.
Originally, they, we had thought it was like seventeen forty-five, but the Landmarks Board did some research, and I think they came up with a, a date of seventeen ninety. Is that what we have in the report? Yeah, I got the report on somewhere.
Picture of it?
Seventeen ninety-three.
Yeah.
And as you know, you, you had the report from the Landmarks Board for the hearing on the landmarking. It was a very extensive report, documented the history of the owners.
It's mixed.
The significance of those, of that family to the town's history.
You wanna see the neighborhood?
Nice, beautiful homes.
It's a mixed neighborhood.
Is, uh, is it the current owner that's doing this, or is he, I thought there was something about that he's selling it and the new owners?
Is a sale involved, but the new, the new buyer is the one that's applying for this?
Sale hasn't gone through yet.
I, I don't know for sure if it's still under contract or whether they've purchased it.
I thought there was something about carriage houses needing three acres. That's not true.
It depends on the zone they're in. Um, I forget what zone it is up to, but per, I think maybe R sixty. R sixty and below, you need one and a half times the, the zoning. So in a one-acre zone, you need sixty thousand, and in R sixty zone, you would need ninety thousand.
Oh, okay.
When you get into the larger zones, it's not one and a half times, I think it's just a minimum of three acres.
Yes.
Oh, that's where I must've read it.
CR two hundred, CR one twenty, and R one twenty zones, um, have to be three acres.
And not less than one and a half times the minimum lot size of the zoning district and all of the other.
But that's only in the lower zones.
Okay.
And then there are, um, some other requirements, um, such as, you know, they have to have a single driveway, um, you know, things like that, and there would be a covenant required, um, that they would have to record in order to make sure that they comply with these other conditions. Um, that's highlighted, um, in the code section on page five of six.
One of the key elements of the covenant is that if, if one of these houses is damaged or burns down, we get the development right back. They don't get to keep that development right for, and, and rebuild a carriage house. Um, the covenant says the development right is returned to the town, so there is some protection there. Um, you know, they couldn't just go in there, build their new house, tear down the carriage, the, the historic house and say, oh, let me build another carriage house. No, we'll get the development right.
That doesn't run with the land.
Correct.
But could they buy a development right and rebuild the carriage house?
They could, sure, they'd have to, yep. But I don't think the variance would apply, because the variance was conditioned upon a landmarking. So if the landmarked building burns down, we get the development right back. They could go purchase a development right, but they would have to get a different variance from the zoning board.
Uh-huh. That's a good point. I don't see that shared driveway. It looks like the driveway's going into the new home, but I don't, where's the connecting?
That's the only access point.
Yeah, they're not showing two driveways.
No. Does that coming in?
It's not likely that this carriage house or this historic home will be used as a second dwelling. Um, it's small. Obviously, the, the owners are building a larger primary dwelling. This will most likely be used as a guest house. Um, I can't imagine that they'll be renting it out as a, as a year-round, uh, house.
Seems that the motivation here is the significance of the, of the landmark status of that building.
Before this was, when, when this went on the market, I got a lot of calls from brokers. They wanted to know what they could do, couldn't do. Uh, a lot of people recognized the importance of trying to preserve that building, and, um, I think we were fortunate to find a buyer that was willing to work with the town to preserve that. Um, most buyers probably would've just said, this is a great piece of property, we're just gonna tear this house down and build what we want.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, all that would've been legal. They could've just bought the property, taken down that house and built what they're showing here.
That's correct.
Because, you know, there's a big pool in the back, there's a lot of other things going on.
That house meets all of the zoning requirements.
Okay.
Coverage, setbacks.
So in essence, we're really just preserving the landmark on the front of it and adding it to the site.
Correct.
Okay. And that area, I mean, I drove by not too long ago, they're flipping a lot of properties in there. There's a lot of rebuilds. Not, not next door, but pretty close to it.
Actually, just up the street, there was another old Halsey House, uh, that David Walentus, uh, had sold, and the purchase, he thought the purchaser was gonna preserve the old house. He found out that they were gonna demolish it. He moved, the town gave him variances to move it to another piece of property on his site, uh, which allowed it to be preserved. So that building is not landmarked, but it's in the same age period as this house.
Well, for me, that makes a difference, that he could do it anyway, without preserving the home. So by us taking action, we're at least saving an historic structure.
So this is on for a hearing.
On the twelfth?
On the twelfth, yeah.
Opportunity for the town board to hear, you know, comments from the public.
The, uh, property owner's attorney will be here. Answer any questions?
Mr. Benacasa.
Yes, yep.
You give, uh, will someone give a quick overview about the house too, the, the main house?
Yes, but there's, so it's actually on for a public hearing for the landmark portion, and then the development right, so hopefully we can.
Combine them.
Combine them.
Back to back.
Yep.
All right, anybody got any other questions? Thanks, guys. Well, thank you. This is a really helpful work session. Appreciate it. We should always do this.
Thank you, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. All right, well, that brings us to our town council member and supervisor liaison updates. We started to miss them last time.
Wanna start over here?
Yeah, let's start with you, Michael.
Um, so not much, uh, this, uh, this morning, but I did, this past weekend, I attended an excellent, um, event at the Bridgehampton Unitarian Congregation. Um, there was a wonderful conversation, uh, that was held, uh, um, between, um, leaders in, in the Jewish faith, Christian faith, and Islamic faith that came together to discuss an interfaith dialogue. Uh, Reverend Kimberly Johnson is the head of that con- congregation, really thank her for bringing folks together, having that nice discussion. Um, also, um, I went with Rick, uh, yesterday to the, uh, to Southampton High School, where we honored veterans thanks to the work of the Patriots Club, which, uh, works to, uh, you know, uh, get students involved in understanding, uh, you know, service and, uh, partaking in various community efforts, and that's a lot of, really honestly, uh, thanks to Thea Frye, who really leads those, um, efforts, and we also recognized her for her commitment to the community. But we honored Rich, Richard Height, we honored Daniel Ferrara, and al- also Gary Carl, who did pass away, but we did honor him posthumously, and, um, also, uh, legislator Anne Welker was there, um, the, the village board was there from Southampton, as well as a member from Congressman Lolota's office. So, uh, it was a nice event, and we stayed for a little bite to eat after, so.
Yeah, very well attended, it always is, but, and the veterans appreciate the homemade food. Uh, Sunday Shermy was there also.
Yes, Clerk Shermy was there, yeah.
She got there so early, she got to help serve.
Yeah.
So, uh, I give her kudos for that, but it was very well attended, and, and many thanks to Thea Frye. She's been doing this for years.
Well, thank you for doing that and representing the town there.
Sure.
Uh, let's see. Last Thursday, Human Resources Department put a career day in place, and I stopped by to see how that was going. It was at the Hampton Bay Senior Center, and it was so well done. We had so, a lot of department heads that were there, and, uh, division heads, and people were coming in. They were set up like in a big horseshoe, and people would come in that were looking for jobs or interested in new jobs, and, uh, the county was there, and it, they were there to explain the civil service process and how to sign up for exams, and, and, uh, nicely done. So I wanted to thank Juan and Wendy and his team for putting that together. And, um, Jim and I and, uh, several others had a meeting, Kathleen. We met with the villages on the FIMP project, because we need to, um, get their cooperation on the next phase of FIMP, and when we're all gonna be required to make some payments. So Dorothy came, and I think they're getting more comfortable with the whole idea, and we're gonna meet with them again next week.
Yeah.
Great.
Your experience and your, your reputation with the, those villages is very helpful.
Oh, thank you, Jim. Appreciate that.
Monday night, I attended Hampton Bay CAC with Rick Martell, Councilman Penn, and, um, gave an update on Penny Pond, Penny Pond Park. And I have another quick update on that, Hampton Bay's people, that I have a, a site visit with a DC and talk engineer and, and Jackie, uh, later in this, later in November, another three weeks. I don't wanna give the exact date, cause I don't want the whole neighborhood down there to go over the, prevent, you know, snowballs.
Yeah, yeah, gotta keep that project moving forward, everybody's really looking forward to it, but at least the structure's down.
So, now that we're calling it Penny Pond Park, we've gotten some comments that there's another Penny Pond up in Red Creek.
Is that right?
At some point, we're gonna have to give like a little history lesson on how that became Penny Pond. And maybe drop the, maybe it becomes Penny Park. So, you know, it's confusing to some of the people who've been around for a while, it was the first thing I thought of when you said that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that, that may need some tweaking, but that's okay.
We can do that, that's easy.
Yeah, it's not written in stone, just an idea.
Alright, so, let's see.
Penny Creek.
Penny, yeah?
Penny Creek Park. Exactly a literate, but.
So, Friday, um, I got to attend the Remsenberg's Bianca Elementary School Red Ribbon Week presentation. Uh, it's a week that the kids are, actually ten days that the kids, uh, kinda sign a, a board and commit to, you know, being drug-free and, and they start this at kindergarten, which is pretty amazing to me. Uh, Chief Kieran spoke and, uh, Chief, who usually, you know, is twenty words or less at these things, spoke quite a while. He has quite a rapport with the young kids there, from kindergarten up, he gave a great presentation. But it was fun to be there, it was fun to sign the wall with the kids, so that was exciting. Uh, Friday night, we had the Youth Bureau Open Mic at the Hampton Coffee in Hampton Bays. Great turnout, I have to say, the next one's November fourteenth, I'll have to get you the location. But maybe we can all kinda make an appearance at that one. Uh, it would be nice, and see what the Youth Bureau actually puts together. Uh, Saturday, we did the Franca, uh, trick or treat, Maria, I know you were there, we had a good time.
Saw you giving out candy.
Yeah, it was the first time I've actually been on that side of it where I got to give out candy, so that was, that was fun. They had, they do a good job, Ludlamam Park is really becoming a, a bit of a jewel in that area and it's great that we're investing money into it, we did talk about the cameras going in there and so on, the new playground. So, it was exciting to be there for the kids. Uh, we also, uh, tomorrow, uh, Saturday, November first, it, at the Hampton Bays Recycling Center is the Stop Throw Out Pollutants.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, look it up on the website, you can see what you can actually dispose of on Saturday. So, it's in Hampton Bays from nine to two.
I just cleaned out my basement and put a big box of things together to take over.
Could, could I also just, I forgot to mention one more thing, really, really important, uh, the Disability Resource Fair um, being organized by Jamie Bowden and the Disability Task Force, we are planning, uh, for that on November first. It's the Saturday at twelve PM at the Hampton Bay Senior Center. A lot of organizations are gonna be there, we're actually gonna get a presentation in the beginning, uh, uh, by New York State OPWDD explaining the process of getting through the open door and also Silo, uh, Self Initiated Living Options, which is a great county-wide organization that helps, uh, folks with special needs, uh, aids municipalities, but also assists, assists families to try to get services for, uh, for various, uh, issues. So, uh, they're gonna be there, they're gonna kick it off and then, uh, there'll be a whole bunch of different, uh, service providers there to provide information. So, that's again, November first at twelve PM, I hope people can make it.
That was nicely done last year and it sounds like even more this year.
Yes, there's actually, yeah, the, we're hoping for a big turnout, hopefully.
Alright, well, if no one else has any other comments, then I move to go into executive session to talk, to discuss personnel, litigation, confidential legal advice and acquisitions and then close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.